They're gray.
Put the day in there and everything?
You know, before you stood in the urinal, you had one foot up and down.
Yeah.
They leveled that out.
They've leveled that out.
Felt like going to Hillside Park.
Well, how was it in there? Was it gilded?
In where?
Oh.
Was it like gold?
Pretty nice. It's pretty nice. Also substantially the same. But it looks good. It looks really, really nice compared to like the whole.
Sorry, the chief stopped me. I have a good excuse for it.
Uh huh.
Whatever.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Budget meeting, I guess.
Yes, sir.
I would, I would like to take this opportunity to tell all the council people that I have decided to cancel the September 12th work session.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth on the discussion on Armor Road. I think it's probably best that we just go ahead and finish it out, get the delineators up, see what it looks like, and then we'll go back and revisit it later on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Well, once, once everything gets completed, how long should we wait until we ask for discussions?
Okay, well, how long will it be before we get all the delineators?
Well, so hopefully the deline, hopefully, I'm not, I'm not guaranteeing, but we, we are hopeful that they'll arrive next week. And municipal service, I told Pat, that's highest priority, because we're, we're doing it with our forces, installing them, so we're just getting the delineators themselves in. So getting those up immediately will be our highest priority, so I would hope in two weeks we'd have them installed, and then however long you think. Uh, yeah, I'm, Mayor, I told Mayor this morning that we would just wait for direction as to when to call, you know, some kind of meeting for further discussion.
Does anybody have any recommendation of how long we want?
At least, don't you think a month?
Yeah.
I mean, I think a month is reasonable. After all the, the last delineators put in, I'm comfortable with that. My residents are all going crazy. But at least I could tell them that we're gonna, not gonna tell them we're doing anything, but we're gonna look at it a month after the delineators, and then I won't be asked questions every time. By night time.
There's still gonna be a lot of unknowns, but even with the delineators, it's all we're gonna have, you know, the questions are gonna be like, how does snow removal work? How does all the, how do all these different things go? Um, you know, at least, I would say at least a month or two to give people time to feel it out, to, you know, take a bike ride down it, to drive it, and, you know, now that people, one of the biggest complaints is people parking along curbs, that won't be possible with the delineators in. So just getting some time for people to feel it out, I think, a couple months.
I agree with a couple months. I just think change is hard, and people need to adapt to change before we can really see and evaluate what that change is gonna be like. I think we need people to have a, a chance to be able to adapt to it. So I like the two months idea.
And then traffic study beyond that?
Two months.
So we're saying the second meeting in November then, whatever that might be?
When do we think the delineators?
Again, we're, well, we're, hopefully the delivery will come next week, but I can't tell you that we'll be able to get them all installed next week.
So I guess second of November or first of December.
Perhaps you can have. It's a lot of delineators. Yeah.
Yeah, a couple of months for, for the first discussions, and then we get some traffic studies and some data, and then we've got some real good information to use.
That would be helpful, the traffic information, too.
I think we need to maybe wait a little longer.
Perhaps after all, they're, they're all in, then, then you can tell us when you'd like to schedule a.
It's a good idea. There's no point in setting it until they're all in.
Yeah.
During that time, I think that we ought to do a little bit more counting cars, how many cars, how many bicycles.
We'll get the, we'll get what data we can, and, and having that amount of time will, will help.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Going forward.
All right. So tonight's work session, as we've done at the last couple of years, our plan was to really just kinda go through the projects that we've listed in your, your capital narrative and the spreadsheet at the very end of the document, one by one, give you a brief, you know, description of each one, just as we have in writing, get any questions or direction that you might have as, as to those projects. So with that, the first thing that I'll, we'll start with is there, we, we have projects in the general fund. This year, a little bit of a change in the budget. In the past, we've set a threshold of $10,000. If a project was under $10,000, it was funded out of the general, and I'm referring now to those general fund departments. If it was under $10,000, it was founded out, funded out of the general fund. If it was more than that, it would be funded out of gaming. This year, we increased the threshold to $20,000. Uh, it hadn't, it stayed at 10,000 for a while. It seemed like, you know, you ought to adjust it upwards from time to time. Did that in part because we have a nice, healthy general fund balance, and I thought we would save a little bit of money in the gaming fund and just do that. So that's one difference you'll see, but they're still, in comparison to the other projects that are in the budget, relatively minor in terms of cost. So what I thought I would do is just maybe give you, rather than us go through and talk about all these projects that are somewhere under $20,000, just see if you had any questions on the first few pages that you see, and if you, if you do, just speak up, and we'll, we'll do our best to answer them, but otherwise, that, when you're ready, we would probably begin in earnest in going through the projects with the first one in convention and tourism on page 208. So if you'd like to take a few minutes to thumb through the first five pages of your narrative, and let us know if you have any questions about any of those projects?
I, I have one. Can, I have one. On wellness and fitness equipment under fire, that's on page 204.
Yes, sir.
Is that new equipment, or are we gonna try to buy some old equipment from the YMCA, or from our use of old equipment from our facility, or?
That's for purchase of new equipment.
New equipment, okay.
And some additional equipment, and then repairs on some of it as well.
Okay. We've looked at buying new instead of maybe getting some of the, well, we probably want new for the fire.
Yeah, we, we've done the use before, and it's, the, the cost difference, we're, we're better off getting the new stuff with the warranty on it and that stuff, because basically, by the time the Y gets rid of it, it's, it's kind of on its, it's kind of worn, worn down at that point anyway.
Okay.
Going back to this seal coat for the parking lots. Who do we, who do we use to do that with?
Uh, we'll go out to bid for that.
Being familiar with seal coats, some of them are good and some of them are not good. So we gotta make sure that we select people that know what they're doing.
They tend to be, they're more prevalent for parking lots than they are for streets, so.
Yeah. You could, you could sure get taken on that deal.
When you go to purchase these, these will all come to council? Or how does this, how will this work?
Oh, no, ma'am, usually it's contracts that come to council, but not like, for instance, trash can lid replacement, or, yeah. So exactly, we just follow our purchasing policy and make sure that we get competitive bids if it's over a certain amount, and, you know, go that way.
Okay.
Any other questions on the first five pages? If not, we'll go ahead and begin with the, with the larger capital projects. Beginning on page 208, with the Armor Road Complete Street Phase Two, and of course, I, I'll turn it over to Sarah here in a second to describe it. Of course, that is up in the air. We know that you have a lot of discussion to do about it. My suggestion would be that you, in the event that you want, wish to continue further with this project, that you go ahead and fund this rather than not fund it, and then have to consider a budget amendment later. If you decide not to proceed, you just wouldn't spend the funds. With that, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
So Armor Road Complete Street Phase One was by far the biggest of the phases for this project with reconfiguring the roadway and the lanes. Phases two, three, and four are really small improvements to intersections and crossing points along the corridor. So the Phase Two description that's in your budget book is not correct. Phase Two would be improvements to the Armor and Howell intersection with the pedestrian refuge islands like we have now at Armor and Iron that shorten the crossing distance to make it safer for pedestrians. We would include landscaping and irrigation, some limited sidewalk replacement and ADA facilities so that all of the curb ramps line up for people crossing the street, and potentially some street furniture. So I have two illustrations here for you. One is showing the pedestrian bump outs with the landscaping that we have at Armor and Iron, and then the, the drawing just kinda gives you a visual of what those intersection improvements would look like. So that's, Phase Two is a much smaller scale set of improvements at Armor and Howell.
I apologize for the, the wording. It was sort of a carryover of language from last year that somehow didn't get caught in the editing process, as Sarah says, it's at Armor and Howell.
So basically, Phase Two just covers Armor and Howell?
Yes.
And this picture is Armor and Iron?
It would be something similar.
Pretend like it's.
At Armor and Howell.
Are we gonna paint any more crosswalks?
We'll fix the wording on that.
Any other crosswalks are gonna be painted or anything like that, or is that pretty much complete? The ones that are painted now?
We would love to do more decorative crosswalks, and going back to the Armor Road Complete Street Plan, that was the thing that people loved the most in our demonstration project, was the decorative crosswalks. Those, though, are, are actually very expensive. So if we could do, maybe not all four legs of the intersection, but a couple, we would, we would love to do that. That will just be a budget issue, and can we fit that into the project?
So does this 83,000, it covers the refuge islands and?
Landscaping and irrigation, sidewalk replacement and ADA facilities, and we have street furniture in here that, that could turn into something else.
Could I make a recommendation that we hold off on this until we find out what we're gonna do with what we've got done out there now?
It's up to the council.
Well, I would just prefer to keep it in there and then remove it if we, if we don't need it. We'd have it in the budget, and then we'd take it out.
Yeah, like Eric recommended, you put it in there and spend the funds if we need to.
Yeah, promoting the funds doesn't approve the project at this point, correct?
No. For us to move forward on this, we would need to bring a task order to you at WSP to do the design, and then we would have to put it out to bid, and then you would have to award a contract.
I'd rather leave it in the budget than decide whether or not to move forward.
I neglected to state at the outset, by the way, at the, at the conclusion of the meeting, we'll ask you if you have any changes to anything that either you talked about tonight, or if you had any from the last week. We'll, so if you have any that you'd like to pose to the rest of the council, keep that in mind. We'll get it one final bit of direction, and hopefully, you know, you will have made your decisions tonight, and that will form the basis of what we've put for you on the 17th for your formal approval. All right, Sarah, next project.
The next project is Gateway signage. You might recall, in your last couple of meetings, you approved a final plat for QuickTrip that included an easement for us to put this sign in. So this will be at the intersection of Armor and I-35. Going back to our Gateway signage plan, this is the, the very tall monument signage. This is construction, a final design of the signage and installation at that location.
Does this one have lights on it?
It would have some, some interior lighting, yes, along the, inside the frame.
Is that that piping lighting, the LED?
And then the letters are backlit.
Backlit, okay. Kind of like the airport. The signage there.
Have we talked to QuickTrip to see where their signage is gonna be?
Their signage is, we are at the far east corner of their lot, and their signage is on the west side.
But I surely don't wanna compete with them.
No. Their signage can't be taller than six feet, though, too, and ours is much taller.
But I'd hate for theirs to be right next to ours, and.
Yeah. No, they're at the other end of the parcel.
Wayfinding signage?
So next year's budget has Phase Two of our wayfinding signage. This is shop drawings that Star Signs is currently working on, so this is what those look like through, we kinda divided that between two budget years, and this is, is the second set of those.
Did we do some this year, wayfinding signage?
Yes, and it's been encumbered. It's in progress.
In progress, okay. Um, can you talk about on Armor Road, the streetlights, the signal crossings? Is that in a different part?
Different project.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to administration. You know, I just, unless you have any questions, these are all ones that we, we have every year in the gaming fund under administration. We, the unanticipated legal fees is kind of a contingency. Single audit costs, if we get federal grants, then we have to have what's called a single audit, so we've budgeted for that, as we do have some federal funds that are invested in, in projects that we've got on the board.
This, this unanticipated legal fees, is that, we've always had that in there?
Yes, sir, we have. It's just, just in case something comes up that isn't budgeted anywhere under a project or something. You have a concern about it?
I remember one time we got in trouble on that, but I'll let it go.
I, I would always come and let the council know before we dip far into that. Administrative costs is just the amount that we charge each of the funds to pay the general fund for services it provides to each fund, and this is the amount for the gaming fund this year. And then again, an amount for contingency and professional services if something comes up that we don't otherwise have budgeted in another project. Moving on to buildings and grounds, I'll turn it over to Pat.
Yeah, a small mower tractor. This is to replace the 1997 John Deere tractor and snow blade attachment. The new unit will be used to snowplow sidewalks, parking lots, and as well as mowing. Any questions?
Will you go back with the John Deere, or are you looking around for something else?
Yeah, we try to be competitive, but John Deere's a good project, product.
Seems to me like Kubota's last a lot longer than John Deere's.
We, we bid it out, and whatever the best, and lowest and best bid is. City Hall West Wing HBAC, the replacement of rooftop units is a multi-year program. It started last year, and this year we have two that we're gonna do, and one is, we call it the West Wing. It's the new addition. It was built in.
We have a West Wing.
Yeah. It was built in 2003, and that leaves this air conditioning unit to be 16 years old. Anytime you have rooftop units and they're approaching 14 years old, you're gonna start having problems that we have. So 20,000 to replace that.
And moving on to the, what we call the City Hall facelift, Kim, would you discuss that?
Yes. I'm not sure if anybody has gone into our new restroom out here yet, but it is open for business, as it were. In the next fiscal year budget, we are looking to redo the administration restrooms. That would be much more of just a cosmetic facelift. This one right here, we had actual structural changes to bring that into ADA compliance, as well as repairs to the sidewalk. It's over by the bike rack. It has dipped over the years, so it's to bring it back up to grade. I'm not sure if you guys have walked out front and taken a look at the sidewalk, but there, we're looking at getting some acid washing or some kind of washing. There is some pigment that is being, you can see through the entire way of the sidewalk. So as you leave, kinda look down and take a look. We're looking to have that removed. As well as to address, I'm not sure if you've, as you come in, the windows on the second story of City Hall kinda looks like there is, it almost looks like a crying. That is just, that is atmosphere that has gotten onto that stonework, and then, over the years, the rain has really taken its wear there. So one of the things that Pat and I have discussed is what kind of sealant that we can paint on top of that stonework so that it can be freshened up. So that would be $50,000.
That'll really improve the look, I think, in the front.
Have we got any way to freshen up the white concrete out there that's starting to turn black?
The sidewalk out front?
Up, up above, the, the white concrete.
That's, that's what we're looking at painting, or having some kind of sealant on top of. Yeah, it's that old concrete rock wall that was very popular when the City Hall was redone. Yes, that, we're looking to have a sealant put on top of that. Actually, we're, we're hoping to work with Tanemic, since they have very good product.
Nine times out of 10, once you paint a concrete wall, you're gonna be painting it the rest of your life.
It is possible. If we can't find another solution, that might be our last resort.
Yeah, it might be the only.
Right. We, we tried doing some sort of sandblasting type work a couple of years ago, and it.
Didn't work.
Didn't work.
I think we need to do, you know, something to it at least.
Have we tried water blasting? I mean.
That might have been what it was.
We've tried that with chemicals. We had MTS come out, and they did their best, and it didn't come out.
What about a dye instead of a paint?
We can take a look at that.
Yeah, I think those are all things that we're gonna be asking some consultants to help us out on, is what can we do, because right now, it, you know, it looks pretty weathered.
We haven't settled on the solution, but that's what the money's.
Okay, I gotcha.
Pat, the next item?
Police Department rooftop HBAC unit. This is a large unit. It's a 35-ton unit. It's replacing one that exists that we've had problems with, high humidity, and lots of callouts for maintenance. It also has the, the refrigerant is discontinued, that R4 refrigerant is discontinued, so anytime a lot of people are replacing rooftop units. Again, it's costing a lot of callouts and a lot of maintenance funding.
I, I hope we're gonna do these two and bid them both as one. Want to go out to bid?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Next item?
Uh huh. City Hall ceiling and caulking. City Hall has, especially up on the roof, and the walls of the roof, there's, the sealant has disappeared, and the aggregate wall panels are showing wear. This is $25,000 to do ceiling and caulking. As an emergency, our crews did a lot of it a couple of months ago because rainwater was coming in. So the point is, this will stop the rain from getting through the roof.
Uh, the next item that's listed is a town square renovation. As you may recall, a few months ago, we brought a memo to you. We suggested that we put some money in the budget to do some things to really try to spruce up that town square area that really is underused now, and we suggested things like replacing the pergola that's there with something, and new furniture, bringing the sunken area right now that used to be a fountain up to grade, opening up the entrance from Swift by removing and replacing the current landscaping that's there, trying to give it a more open feel. I think a lot of times, people don't know what's back there. So trying to do some things like that. We'd have to come to you with a more detailed plan. This is just to provide the funding, but then we really drill down and actually come up with a detailed plan, get your approval on that, so that's what this is for.
Have we any plans to be working with, like, chapels to see if they?
We will be, we will talk to them. Yep. The, the alcohol question is kind of a separate question for you. It's a policy question as well, you know, as to whether, so we'll consider all that. Yes, sir.
We had a, some discussion about an iron gate of some kind, if there were gonna be private events.
Yeah, we'll, we're, we've, we, we will, you know, look at, you know, the best possibilities for, yeah, if, if there is some kind of event, especially if there's alcohol, we'd need to, yeah, make sure that it's closed off. So I've talked to Chief Beamer about possibilities for that, and we'll bring those to you for your consideration as well. Yep.
And we're still looking to acquire that land on the east side, on the town square? Didn't you say it's NT property?
Yeah, from, from Swift.
Yeah.
Yes, we are. They've indicated they're willing, so we are working on that.
Okay, thank you.
But the 200,000 doesn't include either one of those two things, correct?
What two things? Actually, I don't think there'd be a purchase. I really, oh, yes, it would.
It would, okay. I'm just asking, I'm just.
Yeah, and I'm not quite sure what the, how that would look, if we'd be attaching something to a wall, or if we'd come up with something more portable.
But you think that's enough to, to do all that?
Well, that's what we suggested as a budget, so we'll see how far it goes, but I hope so.
Okay, fair enough.
I hope so.
Yeah.
And then as far as the conveyance to us, I don't think that there's gonna be any serious charge for that. That's our understanding. Again, she's willing to give it up, and we maintain it now as it is, so that's what they indicated to us. Sarah, would you like to discuss the next item?
I don't know how many of you have been into our office space upstairs, but it's not set up very efficiently for a community development department. We don't have counter space that we can use to unroll plans and look at them with people who are coming to the window. If you're coming with big plan sets, we have to let you through our lock to door, because we, you can't pass them through the window. If we have someone who needs to use the elevator, they have to ring the bell, and then we talk to them through the intercom, and then we send the elevator down to them. So it's just not very customer-friendly, and the space behind, well, if Public Works has someone at the front counter, Mallory has to step away from her desk so that they can, you know, talk to the person who's at the counter, so she can't get any work done. And our space is just not used very efficiently behind the front counter. We've got a lot of open space that is just open space. So this is a budget to remodel our space upstairs primarily so that we can reconfigure everything and have a better front counter for people who are coming upstairs to do business with community development or with Public Works.
All right. Next item is the community center, and we do put the, to the degree that the community center budget is out of balance, depending upon what the deficit is for the YMCA. We put an amount in to transfer into community center budget from gaming, and so that's what this $200,000 amount is. It is, uh, actually, we're doing better now in that fund, so that's down from what we had budgeted in previous years. The other item that we always put $100,000 in every year, it's really a contingency for any repairs which may come up during the course of the year. Usually sometime during the course of the year, the Y staff will contact us and say, hey, we've got this major capital repair or improvement that's necessary. They do come to the council. You do approve them individually. This is an amount in the budget just to pay for those things as they may come up.
Question on that?
Yes, sir.
So like when we did the chillers, I don't know if it was this year or last year?
Yes.
When they came to us, that came out of like the budget at 100,000?
That's right.
Okay.
For that kind of thing. Yep.
Do we anticipate any at this time?
Not aware of any, but.
I mean, did they come to and say there's some big thing coming down?
Exactly. It's just, you know, a boiler or something like that. You, you just never know, and so it is our building, and we have that responsibility. All right. I'll turn it over to Sarah for the next item.
The next item is Burger King demolition. We, we do have the responsibility of demolishing the existing building once Burger King leaves to relocate into their new store. We, you know, their construction is coming along, so we do expect that to happen this fall. We're getting plans ready so that we can put that out to bid, and that's the amount budgeted for that. And then we would transfer that property to the developer.
Mr. Mayor? Before the building comes down, we still going to let the police and fire department play with the building?
We do plan on that. This is the very time-dependent, and the developer is very anxious to get it down. So yes, we would like to do that, but it won't be a long period of time that they'll have in that building.
Just as long as they have time to play, you know, they don't get this opportunity, but rarely, to go in and tear down a building.
We'll give them what time we have.
Thank you.
That's actually training.
Have that much time on a building that you can train with him?
Train quickly.
All right, next item?
The next item, we've been calling this Phase 2B for quite a while. So the construction of the new Taney Street was Phase One, and the construction of the new Vernon extension was Phase Two. So Phase 2B is all of the little pieces of improvements that we are not able to construct until Burger King is closed. So there's the extension of a water line from the medical office building lot to the west to Taney, which would cut across their drive-through exit is part of that. which would cut across their drive-through exit is part of that. The median on Taney Street is part of phase two B because our, our settlement agreement with Burger King, we could not put that in until their drive-through closes. There are, um, finishing off the, the right turn lane taper on Armor Road is part of that. So all these little green things that you see here, with the exception that we had originally planned that we would be taking out the, their parking lot entrance on Taney Street and doing the sidewalk extension. But now we have agreed with the developer that we will leave that driveway in place during the construction period and then they will take on the cost of doing that work. So what you're seeing here is all of phase two B and there's a little bit of that that actually will be done by the developer.
This is actually the last infrastructure, bit of infrastructure work within the, is it not?
Yes.
Within the Armor Road area.
The end is in sight.
There's no way that we can leave an entrance in off of Taney into when Starbucks get in there.
They have been planning through this whole process for their access to come off of Diamond Parkway through the medical office building parking lot.
All right, moving on.
So the next item is the Walker Road intersection improvements. These are plans that McClure Engineering is, is currently working on and we expect this to get out to bid, um, this fall. This is realigning all of the turning movements, um, at Walker and Armor and extending the, um, storage space for the northbound left turns, um, to, to address all of the queuing that happens at this intersection, particularly for traffic entering and leaving the hospital and the Cerner campuses.
This project was in the fiscal year 2019 budget. It's in the engineering phase now. We hadn't gotten to construction this year, so we're basically carrying it over into 2020. All right, Pat, will you take the next item?
Yes, sir. Um, this is Armor Road redevelopment area mowing and landscaping. Uh, the, this started this year, last year. Uh, this lines to fund the ongoing maintenance of planting, fertilization, weed control, sprinkling system and mowing. Eventually it's expected that the maintenance will be the responsibility of the Community Improvement District that has been established for this area. So it's not that many years that I think the city will continue doing this.
So we, I, I circled the word eventually. Do we have a timeframe on that? Cause, you know, at a certain point, we would expect them to take over. When it hits over fifty percent, that's about when we ought to be talking to them about.
One North is fifty percent done?
When it's not fifty percent done, but fifty percent developed.
Occupied?
Occupied, yeah. So I think that's, that's the point where we would have that discussion with them.
But don't they start?
Currently going up would be fifty percent, correct?
Could be. I'll have to take a look. Yeah.
Cause the second they start collecting revenue of any sort.
Right.
That goes back into the CID.
It will go into, yes. So that, that, that's, that would also.
So then they'll start having money. Okay.
That's right. There is no money right now in the CID.
Tell them to take on debt for it.
Uh, the next item is just professional services. So we have very complicated legal and financial instruments that are involved with the development of One North. Uh, we've, uh, got a master development agreement. We, every time a component development is taken down, that's, uh, those are some separate agreements for review. Uh, we have a tick tax increment financing that's involved and so we have TIF actions. And so between legal and financial, uh, actions, it, it is not cheap. Uh, the investment continues and this is, uh, an amount to pay for what might be necessary to, uh, continue to see that area through till it's entirely privately developed. Uh, the next item is the Burlington Corridor project.
So we expect to get the phase one improvements for the Burlington Corridor Complete Street out to bid next year. And this is the budget figure that's shown is based on our discussions with the council last October, where we talked through some of the improvements, particularly where we had design options with you. The number that's shown here is our, our phase one. That's for all of the improvements on the east side of Burlington with some improvements that, um, at crosswalks where we have to have a place for people to land on the west side. This number does not include the three point eight million dollars that we will receive in surface transportation program funds and two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars from MoDOT that they are contributing for surfacing of the roadway out here. Um, so that would offset that, that total, um, figure. This is primarily pedestrian improvements, cycle track, landscaping, crosswalks, lighting. But, you know, east side improvements from Tenth to Thirty-second.
On the east side, is that including like bus stops and everything like that or they?
Yes, it does include bus stops.
Okay. And so the three point eight million, this figure does not include that. When that comes in, that'll go back to gaming, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
Three point eight million is a reimbursement. Yes, so it reimburses us for.
Okay. And then we'll get that in sometime in 2020.
Yes, sir. Uh, if you were to look on page one hundred twenty-two, which is where we have the five-year projection for the gaming fund and it, we also show revenues there, that three million eight hundred thousand dollars shows us a revenue in fiscal year 2020.
Okay.
So this one, I, I wasn't part of the discussion with this, so quick question. We keep the six lanes of travel as well as?
Yes, we do.
And then, um, the bike path and the, the east side piece, that's taking out the parallel parking that's there and turning it into bike. Okay. I mean, I know it's gonna get a ton of questions.
No, I have a ton of information I can provide you if you would like more detail.
I, I would, yeah. We'll have to sit down.
Well, no. Okay, the, the, the east side, is that where the bike lane and pedestrian traffic is or?
Yes, so crossing the Heart of America Bridge, the shared use path for bikes and pedestrians is on the east side of the bridge. And so we're continuing that north.
Okay, but then would that be a shared walkway between the bicycles and pedestrian?
It is between Tenth and Twelfth because that's where we have the most constrained right-of-way. We have about a hundred and eight feet of right-of-way between Tenth and Twelfth. North of Twelfth, it gets to about a hundred and thirty feet of right-of-way. So that's where those two split off and the, the bikes get a, a separate cycle track, um, that's not part of the sidewalk.
And pedestrians?
Then there will be no cycle path on the west side?
No.
So it's a two-way path?
Two-way path.
It'll be on the east side of Burlington, but it's for two-way traffic, two-way bicycle traffic.
Bicycle plus pedestrian.
Which will have, they'll have their own sidewalk.
Yeah.
They won't be sharing the cycle track with the cycles. They have a dedicated sidewalk for pedestrians north of Twelfth Street.
How much, how much of Burlington are you gonna take out?
Just the parking.
Questions, east side parallel?
East side.
Go ahead.
So, so all the businesses from Tenth down to Thirty-second Street understand that their parking is going to be gone. We've been in contact with them and there will be no parking on the street.
We sent mailed notices to every business on Burlington as part of the planning. So they were all invited to participate in that. Now that we've moved into engineering, we have continued to be in touch with them about, you know, the, the engineering process. It's been a while since we've reached out to them just because of where we are. That'll be coming up again. So is there somebody out there who doesn't know about this? Maybe, but we've been reaching out to them throughout the process.
I mean, the next letter I would send, I would mail it, a signed receipt so you know that they got it. I don't want somebody walking in the door saying, I never got one in the mail. That way there you can look at it and say, you know, Joe Smith signed for it at your office.
You know, a perfect example of this is Armor Road, you know? I mean, nobody really knew what was happening until it was too late. And then, and I don't want that to happen again. I mean, I.
There's no way that we can guarantee that. That's, you know, just the process. But we, in this one in particular, we have been continually reaching out to businesses along Burlington through this process. And they will continue to hear from us as we get closer to construction.
Do you think this is even a good idea until they figure out what they're gonna do with the Bucklone Hill Bridge?
Yes. That's why we're doing this.
And MoDOT, this is a MoDOT highway and they've been fully involved in reviewing the design for this. Every state, in fact, it's, it, their shop now for the review of the design that we've, Olson has finished.
Go ahead, Joe. Um, the, the response from the one, the business owners that got, have, have we had any response, positive or negative from those? Uh, we, is this to be discussed now or are we gonna?
If you'd like.
I didn't know if I was like getting too.
I can say, you know, for Sarah, I mean, we, we really did have a very extensive public process where I, I really, I'd be very surprised if there are any property owners on the east side of Burlington that aren't aware at this point of what the plans are.
And I mean, to the mayor's point, I was shocked at the people who were blown away by Armor Road. Like, people just came out of the woodwork being surprised. So it i- it is a thing that, you know, as, as engaging as we can try to be, some people just miss the memo. But I didn't know if we'd heard from business owners who were like, please don't take my parking away or if any of that has come through or if it's just been kinda, okay, we got the letters.
I mean, it, it's been a while since we had a, a public meeting with them. So, you know, people were generally supportive of this plan when it was originally adopted in 2016. Because, you know, the, the comments that we get about Burlington today are that it's ugly and that it's industrial and that it's not, there's no curb appeal. So that if you have a business on Burlington and you're trying to draw in customers, Burlington's not helping you out.
I don't disagree with that.
And our goal here is to make it, I mean, curb appeal is a good encapsulation of our goal. To make this a better front door for North Kansas City and that includes all of the businesses located on, on Burlington. So, I mean, yes, there is a loss of some parking here. But we, you know, in a lot of these businesses, not all of them, but a lot of them have their own parking.
Right.
Like, um, Accent Controls has a parking lot of their own. Chicken and Pickle has a parking lot. They continue to work on expanding their available parking.
For many of them, it's like maybe two or three spaces to along the frontage. Second question on this is, um, and this is in the future, but I know that I've seen plans for the streetcars, talked about this being the designated corridor. Are we keeping enough space in that median to allow for?
Yes, we are not touching the width of the median with these plans because of that. And one of the things that we're including in this project is, um, on the bus stops to upgrade those to level boarding and the design that KC ATA is using for their MAX stops. Because what might come before streetcar is a North Oak MAX line that would be a, a streetcar precursor. So we're trying to do the improvements now to allow them to upgrade to that level of service in the future so they don't have to come in and tear any more of Burlington up.
And that's in the budget?
That's in this budget.
Is KCATA subsidizing that at all or the MAX?
They are not at this point. But, you know, that's, it's not a huge amount in the overall. We're, we're doing five bus stops in phase one.
Okay, is there gonna be any protected bike lane on this Burlington?
Yes.
Where at? I mean.
That's the.
On this picture is.
Here, here's three travel lanes.
Which side is the left side? Okay, is that?
This is looking north. So here are the three travel lanes with the little cursor.
Okay, so this is the east side.
This is some grass. This gray area is the cycle track and then you've got sidewalk next to the building.
Okay, but you, the protected bike lane won't be out in the street like we got here, right?
There will be, um, a, a couple of spots near intersections and a little further north where it comes out closer to the street. Um, in, in this section, it's a little, it's further, closer to the sidewalk.
What I'm getting is a snow removal. I mean, uh, you know, if, if the bike lane gets full of snow, who cares? But if the, if the highway, we gotta figure out how to get, or the state has to get the snow off of that, you know? Are we still talking about a square corner down here at Armor and, and Burlington?
Yes.
So we, it's taken a while, but we actually, on your very next agenda, uh, we are gonna have a, an item before you to hire a, a right-of-way agent to work, to acquire little bits of right-of-way here and there all throughout the project, including that area at that corner. So again, this is part of the MoDOT process and so we've been depended upon them to some degree. Uh, but they have now, they, you know, one of the things that we had to do is get ourselves an appraiser. That'll be on your agenda. Once we get to that point, then we can look at what it'll cost to get that corner and if you'd like, acquire that corner.
Why would we wanna make a square corner there? Because you're gonna slow, slow the traffic down.
Because it's safer. It's safer for people to make those turns at a slower speed.
I think we are okay, I'm okay with slowing the traffic down. I think that's the biggest issue on Armor is that we're having a road diet. We're going, we're undergoing a road diet and I think that's, I, I actually don't hear, I think I've heard one complaint about Armor, I will be honest. So I, I know that I hear a lot of other council members talk about how they get bombarded with complaints. I haven't. I've gotten one. And other than people being annoyed by construction, I mean, that's always gonna be a thing. But if you really look at what's happening, at least in my world, I don't hear a lot of complaints. People, I think what I'm hearing other people say is that people are frustrated. And I think one of the reasons people are frustrated is that you, we are going on a road diet and so we're making them go from two lanes to one and that is slowing them down. And, and the purpose of the location of the slowing of them down is intentional. Because as they enter our downtown, we want them, I want them to slow down. So I think that's one of the issues that, from what I'm hearing other people say.
Yeah, but if you get too many of them slowing down too much, they're not even gonna come through town. They're going down the avenues.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
They're not even gonna come to North Town.
Burlington and Armor, we actually would still have right turn lane. But that intersection right now, Armor comes in at a little bit of an angle. The engineers want that to be more ninety degrees because it's safer for people making that turn. So you, you slow down a little bit making the turn, but the intention's not to slow the traffic on, on Burlington because of the right turn. It's.
Well, no, I, I.
I don't think I'm going any faster down an avenue than I am down Armor. No, I do think we should do traffic studies. I'm not saying we shouldn't do traffic studies on Armor, but.
I take Twenty-first Street.
It's faster?
Yes.
And you're following the speed limit and it's faster?
Yes, I am following it. But it is faster.
But have we, I wanted to know about, my question was about Armor. Have we gotten complaints from businesses that they were not aware of what's happening on Armor? Cause I haven't heard any of those complaints from businesses.
The Mount Bucket, well, we aren't here to discuss that. That's coming later, but.
But we have gotten complaints from businesses?
Oh, yeah. Post Office, the Quick Trip, the Mount Bucket, uh.
Quick Trip, they have their own lane.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I just, I wanna compare, cause you guys are asking questions about Burlington and I don't know what's similar and what's not, but I agree that, you know.
We think they're pretty dissimilar, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I, I do too, I guess. But I agree with the business notification. I agree that we need to make sure we don't get surprised by the businesses on Burlington. So if that's the conversation we're having, that is, I agree.
We'll make, we'll, we'll redouble our efforts as we get closer to the point of construction to make sure that nobody will be surprised when the construction begins and be unaware. We'll do our best.
Okay.
Anything else on the Burlington Corridor? Uh, Sarah, we can talk about downtown streetscape improvement.
Okay, now we're talking. This comes back to your original question about, um, lights and, and other items. This is a, a multi-year update to downtown streetscape on Armor Road between Buchanan and Fayette and then on Swift from Eighteenth to Twenty-first. Um, we, we have trees that are, have been dying. Public Works has, has had a few trees removed in that area. Our pavers are being kinda worn away from the bottom. We can't get replacement, um, street, um, light poles anymore. We just, we have two or three, um, that we have, um, stashed away, but they don't make those anymore. So we're looking at, um, refreshing our downtown streetscape. And we will be having a work session with you on the twenty-fourth to go over, um, some design questions for you and some questions about phasing. We're currently showing this as three phases of work over three years. Um, and we want to get more into the details of, of that as part of that work session. That's, that's the quick overview.
So a reminder, pleased to have that on your calendar for the twenty-fourth at six P M. Any questions about the streetscape project? Sarah, next, next project?
So we, in, in this year's budget, we added a line item for city-initiated demolition or abatement. Um, and this, this next year's budget actually increases the amount. We do relatively little, um, city-initiated demolition or, or boarding of residential property where we have code enforcement problems. But it is, is picked up in the past year. Um, and this line item allows us to, to do that work when necessary. We do attempt to recoup our costs by putting a lien on the property. I'm not sure that to date we've recovered much, but that's our goal, um, in general. And this is just to allow us to continue to do that when we have nuisance property or code enforcement violations where. or code enforcement violations where we want to step in before things get worse.
So we don't have a specific project in mind for this money, it's just there if we need it. The idea would be to keep that amount at $50,000. So if we spent, say, $27,000 to demolish a house, then we would replenish that amount in the next year's budget. If we don't spend anything, then we'll just carry over the $50,000 and, you know, from year to year.
Have we had this in prior years?
No.
This is this year's budget.
This is, okay.
But we, we only had it in at $10,000, and that didn't seem sufficient.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that's the one difference. But we were sort of thinking of building it up year by year, and after talking about it at staff level, we thought, let's just put an amount in, keep it at that level.
Okay.
That would hopefully be sufficient if we have a, it could be a single project depending.
That was kind of my question. I use that house, 24th, it burned a couple times. How much would it have cost to demolish that? Because that was as close as we've gotten, I think, to having to put one down.
Well, I don't know, we never did get a price.
Okay, I didn't know if it, like, there was an average for taking a house out and demolishing it?
Really, it depends on whether there's a basement.
Can't the fire department do it, most part, anything above ground?
They can go play, yeah, they can go play.
Maybe not the basement, but the, everything above ground.
Yeah.
Really, we attempt to do as little as we feel is necessary. Like, so far this year, there have been a couple of properties that we have mowed. There's been one property that we boarded up. There's another that has either just been boarded or is about to be, so that we can secure the property so that people aren't entering it. But we tried to do as little, because it is, it does belong to somebody. As little as we, as we feel like we need to, to make it safe and lessen the ISO impact to the neighborhood.
But how long do you keep them boarded up? There's one on 25th that they're not going to fix, I don't think. So how long do we give these people before we do something, other than board it up?
That gets into some legal questions.
Yeah, we don't have a hard-fest rule for that. When we get, we, as a city, you, staff, get to a point where we think this can't stand, we start taking a look then at, but it's a serious action to, you know, take down, so it's...
Certainly it is. And, you know, the same family owns the one on 25th, owned the one on 24th that we did tear down. I believe the same family. He's no longer with us, type thing. It seemed like it, you know, it really runs an area down, you know, and it should be a time limit of some kind. I know it's not up to, and the judge is so forgiving, you know, months and months.
The next two items are items that we've had in year after year. You're familiar with the Hillside litigation, I think. This is ongoing litigation, it's probably over, is over 10 years old, claims, counterclaims. Every time we have a court date set, usually gets continued by the other side. So we just keep an amount in for what litigation, and eventually it'll, something will happen in court. And so that's what that amount is. The other item, Parina Mill demolition. Again, we're really about the end of options there. We did attempt to keep, to make the, one of the previous owners responsible for the condition in which they turned it over to a subsequent owner. We did go to a court, or we did sue over that, we did lose. We don't really think there's, it's not our property, but if, we, you know, we're assuming that everybody would like to see that eventually come down. Our next step is to contact the railroads and talk to them about our thoughts and plans about working to eventually take down that property, and that amount is in, we hope that would be sufficient.
But don't you think it's time that we start talking to people and try to figure out what we're going to do?
No, it is, and that's the direction you've given us. And right now, it's in the city councillor's office to make contact with the railroads, because he has that, he knows them better than us.
Because it's probably not going to get any cheaper.
I don't disagree with you. I'd like to see progress on this, and I'll, I'll talk to the city councillor tomorrow about where he stands on making those contacts.
This is something that, you know, you kind of clue me in as soon as I got it on the council. What is, it's not our property, it is owned privately, and it's land, it's locked, like, you can't access it unless you cross railroad tracks. What's our liability safe if it fell over tomorrow, just crumbled? Does that blow back on us, even though we don't own it? It's just, I'm just curious why we are responsible to demolish it, other than, it's not...
Well, it's just because the owner does not have sufficient funds. If it's going to get done, we're going to have to do it.
So it's more of a, like, move on it?
It really is. I mean, I'd love to be able to find that deep-pocketed owner out there who, yeah, but...
Nobody bid on the $200,000, I asked?
No, no, yeah.
Okay.
Sarah, next item?
I thought I was, stopped at Burlington, there was one more. One of the suggestions that we received in the Bicycle Master Plan process was to look at a connection from Diamond Parkway to 14th Avenue that would bypass the truck route on 16th Avenue.
Sarah, excuse me, we need to look at your vehicle replacement first. We haven't approved it.
That's my mistake, Sarah, I'm sorry, there was a...
Eric's mistake, or who?
Sorry about that.
I have a picture for that.
Was that, I didn't think so. I was waiting to see your car up here, and I think you'd move around.
It's out in the parking lot. We have three vehicles in community development. We have three staff members who go out to do inspections or out in the field. And this would be the replacement of our 2009 Ford Escape, which is the oldest of our three vehicles. It has about 65,000 miles on it. We have had to repair the transmission, and this year, the air conditioning system has required repairs. So this is just to replace that vehicle. Our policy is to replace them at 10 years. No questions about that one?
I didn't think there would be.
This one, this one is an idea coming out of the Bicycle Master Plan. The mayor suggested we look into, how can we get bikes down that green space? And we looked out there and said, well, there are, there are really three options on the east side, that, not the green space that the mayor pointed out, but further east, that then also avoids the intersection of 16th and Lynn. And so this would be an amount for us to do the engineering required to figure out how to do that, and whether we would need to acquire any property, or whether it could go through in MoDOT's drainage ditch area. And so not to construct anything, but to do the engineering work necessary to figure that out. We think that if, if it works, after looking at that, it might make a good application for Transportation Alternatives Program money from Mark next year.
All right, next items are fire.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first thing listed here is a fire engine replacement. This was, has been scheduled, it was actually in the budget in 2015, and we moved it to this year to kind of spread out the age of our apparatuses, so we weren't replacing them back to back. Our current reserve ambulance, the one that was involved in the accident, was the one that was initially going to be replaced. But what we'll do is purchase a new pumper to place at Station Two. That current pumper down there will become our new reserve apparatus. So that's, this is for the replacement of that. We've almost got the specifications done. It's going to be right at $738,000, $739,000 for the replacement.
Do we get any insurance covering on the one that was wrecked?
We should, either, I was hoping to today, hopefully tomorrow, we'll have a estimate on what the valuation of it was. They did total it last week, the appraiser came out on Wednesday, said it would be three to five days. So, but we haven't heard anything back from them at this point. Any other questions about the apparatus?
If, whatever we get out of that, could, would that be applied to the $740,000?
Well, what we, and I have it, when we get that number back, we need a reserve apparatus, because when one of our frontline apparatuses needs repair or maintenance done, we bring our reserve apparatus up into that spot. And now with the other one being totaled, we don't have a reserve apparatus. Right now, I have an arrangement with another department that will loan us one temporarily. If we get into a problem, one of them breaks down. But what my intention is, is hopefully at the next council meeting, if we get some numbers in, to come with you and use that insurance money to buy us a used truck that we can use for the eight to nine months until this one arrives, and we can start that process again, then we'll sell that one. And hopefully with the, not only having it eight months and buying a used apparatus, there won't be that much depreciation between the time we buy it and sell it. So we should be able to put that money back into the, into the fund when we do that. But it'll be eight to nine months out.
Off the sub, how are you getting down Bedford down there with the fire trucks? Because they've got that whole road closed, don't they?
I believe it's open now.
Down in the PID?
Mm-hmm, and we've, we had routes. We just had to, couldn't take a straight shot at everything.
I was down there yesterday.
Okay. The next item is a training facility. This is actually a rollover from this year. This is for a study to see if we can use the land adjacent to the water treatment plant and the animal shelter to put in a pad. It's kind of a, we're looking at it in phases, do a feasibility study about putting in a pad where we can go down and train, dedicated training facility where we can pull hose, spray water, set the trucks up and everything, because we really don't have anything in our city limits that's dedicated where we have enough space to go and do that. So this is a continuation of, we didn't get that project off the ground this year, and we'd like to do that next year. So any, any construction of anything would take place in the 2021 budget. This is just for a feasibility study.
Boy, I see you down at the park, parks down there.
And sometimes that, that causes issues with the parking there. So we'd like to have someplace where you can go where it's safe, we don't have to worry about bystanders coming up, and we can, we can actually train in a better environment.
This is an opportunity for jump in real quick before Dave gets the next last, the next item up. I do urge you as, to look at the five-year CIP that's in your, that is included as part of this. So, yeah, it's true, there's $20,000 for the feasibility study for the training facility. But if you look in the next year, and it may not get spent, especially if a project doesn't prove feasible, we're showing $750,000 in fiscal year 2021. So we try, that's, just, just keep that in mind and do look at that as, you know, we're only talking about next year's projects tonight. But some of these projects do have an impact in-out year. So I just, you know, urge you as you are reviewing the budget to keep that, keep that in mind as well. For some of these, they're multi-year projects, or one year may be a lead-up to another year.
All right. And the, the next item, the personal protective equipment, the bunker gear, that's one of those items, it's a multi-year item. We've just finishing purchasing $39,000 worth of bunker gear this year. We do go on a seven-year replacement program, we break it down over three years. We get a contract with the company, we send it out for bids. They guarantee us what it's going to cost us for three years, and we rotate our gear through, and that gives everybody, the NFPA standards is replacement in seven to 10 years. So we do the seven-year replacement, and everyone gets two sets of gear. They can wash for our cancer initiative, where they can take, when they get out of a fire, they can have a new, clean set to put on while they wash their others. But this is, this is one of those multi-year projects that was in last year's budget. It's in this year's, and it'll be in the following years.
There are some items that we have listed under interdepartmental. They apply to departments across the board. The first one is IT supplies, information technology supplies. This is an amount that we have in every year. As it's impossible to predict every computer need, model break, or need upgrading, so we have an amount in to pay for those things as they occur. Also have an amount in for general liability insurance. Liability insurance shows throughout the budget. This is the one that's allocated based on the total valid, budgeted cost in each fund. This particular fund, it comes to about $25,000 for events, projects, activities that are budgeted out of gaming. And for the next item, website redesign, I'll ask Kim to speak to that.
Good evening. The city's current website was redone in 2015, so in 2020, it will be five years old. Industry standard is kind of, you have to refresh things every three to five years. The way that people look for content, the way that technology has evolved, it's just kind of time to have our website completely overhauled from the ground up. That would be put out for an RFP. I have, and that, we are projecting that price to be about $50,000.
So is that something that we're going to be doing about every five years or so, continuing? I mean, it seemed like we just, like, it seems to me like we just did it, but I guess it was four to five years ago, but...
Just about the time I figure out how to do it, they change.
That's what I'm saying now, too, starting to move, so...
That is pretty much industry standard, and that's just because all the devices that we use to access it continually change. And the way that people search for content continuously changes.
What do you mean, search by, for content? Like, doing the search bar on the, or like, the way they pull things up as far as the menu, or?
The way that people access information, actually, this kind of gets into library and science, but the way that people look for information continually changes, because programs and services change. But as well as, as we're going to more mobile devices, the way that it populates on your screen continues to change.
I think this is important. One of the complaints I hear fairly often is that, like, it's hard to find stuff on our website, and a lot of links are dead, they go nowhere. I consider myself relatively tech savvy, and I can't find stuff that I'm looking for on there. So this is, this is definitely good, and the focus on mobile is going to be important. The number concerns me a little bit, because with new tools and, you know, somebody like me can build a website now for relatively free, pretty functional. So the $50,000 was, you know, five, six, seven years ago, that was, you know, average or even low end. Now it's, you know, substantially down. So hopefully those bids come in quite a bit lower.
Perhaps we've overbudgeted, if possible.
Well, I would say that one thing that differs from a private website versus a government website is the cybersecurity element. So you do have to, our, generally speaking, government websites, hosting fees are considerably higher because of that cybersecurity element.
Sure, and part of that, it's the, not RSS, it's the, help me out, it's HTTPS, whatever that certificate's called.
Correct, a lot of...
Go ahead.
No, a lot of people who host government websites have multiple server applications, so that when your site is attacked, it's, they're actually, when they talk to us, they talk about, it's not if, it's when, or, not when, but if, or, I said that right? They actually slide you off into a different area, and a specialized team can kind of help come in, because they do it on a DDS. I mean, they come in with a huge denial of service attack, and just to make sure that those items are secure. So a lot of the fees that you're seeing are actually associated with hosting, as well as just saying, hey, making sure that that website is up 99.7% of the time. A lot of people who come to a government website, you know, they're very task-oriented. I came here to pay my water bill, and I want to do it right now. So really making sure that that website is up all the time, even if it is under attack, is a high part of what we're going to be looking for in a contract.
Right, yeah, that's, that's absolutely important. Still, some of those fees, some, because we were, I used to work with banks that had to have that similar layer of protection, and it's just come down a lot, so...
I'm really hoping that we've overbudgeted.
Okay, I just wanted to say that, Mike, hopefully those bids come in lower, but definitely important.
The website will still be, is it kind of the same look and feel as what we have today? I mean, are we really overhauling? Because we've kind of looked at our brand, and the website has been tied to our brand.
It would carry over all of our brand elements, yes. That, it might be part of a good website feasibility study is to go in and look for what people are searching for now, and making sure that it's higher up in that...
More, more easily accessible to them.
Correct, correct, yeah. When, I hate to say it, when people come to government websites opposed to a more entertainment-style website, we actually don't want them to be hanging on our website a whole lot. We want them to find what they want and move on. Again, usually, most people who come to a government-style website, they're looking to perform a task or find a piece of information. I want to make sure that they're doing that as quickly as possible.
The next item that's listed under the library, we've talked about last week when the library was here, the tuck pointing at the library. So we weren't going to talk about that again unless you had any questions. The next item listed is the amount to balance the communication funds, communications fund budget. So again, the gaming fund does make transfer to the communications fund as necessary to balance that fund, which funds the, our expenses for Link City Network, which we continue to own, and which we have an agreement with NOXIC to operate, which they do under the LLC KC Fiber. The amount that's in here this year, $350,000, that's, includes some back payments from previous years, which we've been holding on to pending getting an audit from them. I did just get the audit, need to take a little bit more look at it to verify the numbers that are in it. But that number should come down in future... that are in it, but that number should come down in future years. So if you look, we'll look at the five-year CIP, it's showing $350,000 next year, but $200,000 in following years. And even those numbers might be high. We budgeted, we always budget the entire amount and the cap that we can lose according to our agreement annually is $150,000. And just to be on the safe side, we always budget that. But that's the reason that it's a little bit higher next year than in following years is to make some of the back payments for previous year's deficit. Any questions? Uh, the next several items that are in here under Parks and Recreation, again, we talked about those, uh, at the last work session a week ago. So with that, uh, I would move on to Police and Chief.
Eric, I'd.
Oh, yes.
Real quick, on on the Parks and Rec stuff.
Yep.
Is there a, an idea that we could put a timeline on some of these projects that are just kind of evergreen? Um, the festival shade structure, we're allocating money and nothing happens?
Well, I wouldn't call it evergreen. Um, that was, the budget was amended, and I'm not here to defend Parks and Recreation, to be honest with you. But the budget was amended in fiscal year 2019.
Okay.
A few months ago. Didn't get accomplished. I I don't have any reason to think it won't get accomplished in fiscal year 20. It's certainly not intended to carry over from year to year.
Okay.
Nor are any of these other items that are are listed here. Uh, the renovation to Diamond One, we, you know, we should.
That's going to happen.
Yeah, we should be proceeding with that and then the cottonwood removal is a one-time item, uh, so, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was a way or, because the, I still don't fully understand the dynamic between the city and the Parks Board and the department, but is there a way that we can attach a, you know, you'd think it's a year, right? We put it in for the year, but if we roll it forward continually?
Well, the gaming fund is city money, so they are asking for money from the city to do this, which you granted.
Right.
You could always take it away. I, Mayor Mayor Stilo actually expressed frustration to me about this and said, can't we take it away from them? The, I guess the the issue there is the Parks Board by statute has responsibility for the care and maintenance of the parks.
Right.
So I don't know how the city could jump in and just say, we're taking over and we're doing that project. They would, but I mean, you could have that discussion with the Park Board if you want. I mean, uh, if, they they might be willing to delegate it to us, but.
Festival shade structure and then the.
That's the topic that's.
That's that's the one, and then the other one is like the the request that's come out a number of times about putting a shade structure near the playground that was thought about being discussed and then nothing came of it, that not even in the budget.
In the budget.
My my understanding is they decided to take a look at that next year.
They just got to think about discussing it maybe next year was the way it was.
Jesse, I might, I'd try, I think that the Park Board now is starting to function a little better.
That's good.
Where we might get a little more action.
Well, it's it's frustrating to me that we have to spend this money. It, anybody could have stood out there knowing when they're going to use this and we could have avoided this whole 55,000. It's just irritating to me. Should have been, it's a no-brainer to stand somewhere if you're going to have a band at a certain time and go, oh, I wonder if it's going to be hot here, saying.
If we knew who who was the designer on that, do you want to go talk to them?
No, no, it's water under the bridge now.
This money that they have asked us for is our money, correct?
Yes.
It is not the Parks Department's money.
That's correct.
So so at any time, we as a city council can put a time restraint on our money on when it's going to be used.
Absolutely.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean, if we put it in there that it has to, the project has to be completed, I'm making this up within 30 days and if it's not, we're going to take the money back away from you.
You could do that.
We can do that.
Yes, sir.
At any time.
Yes, sir.
Does that answer your questions?
I would suggest a discussion with the Park Board before you do something like that.
It's still our money though, I don't.
No, you're, yes, that's correct, sir.
It's still our money, I mean, they're asking it from us, I'm, I mean.
No, you're absolutely right.
They're not, they're not in control of my money as far as I'm concerned.
I I do not disagree at all.
Really our money, it's taxpayers' money.
Right, but it's under the city council's control.
It's under RES management, yes.
And to be clear, I'm not looking to pull the rug out, I'm just curious that as these, if they continue to drag on in the future, can we, do we have that recourse?
Sure, I, my my first suggestion would be that you, we invite the Park Board to come and have a conversation so that they can hear your concerns directly.
Jesse, you can make a motion anytime you want to put a time restraint on, as long as you get a second, we vote on it, they have to do it, whether they like it or not.
According to the Parks and Recreation Director, uh, design should be proceeding here in the next couple of months and then followed, shouldn't take too long to construct.
Like bike racks.
Right, right along with your. Don't get me started.
I love getting him started. All right, that's all for me on that one. Chief?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to put some time constraints in these items, so let's hear what you got.
As long as it's not before January 10th. I want to recognize three members of our, uh, the police department staff that are here tonight, Sergeant Mark Smith, Major Jim Bagley and Major Kevin Freeman. They're the subject matter experts on any of these items if we need to drill down into them, and I thank them for their time tonight. First item we're going to talk about is our camera, citywide surveillance, uh, camera system that we've got. Uh, we have money in this year's budget to replace the cameras on the three mobile trailers that we have. Those things are past the end of their usefulness, we want to improve the camera systems on those and then add three additional cameras to the citywide network, uh, to locations which we have not completely firmed up yet, but we've identified some places where we think that we can continue to enhance that network to give us a better sense of, uh, what's going on in different parts of the city. So that money is in the budget, uh, to move those items forward. The second item is police vehicles. Uh, this is part of our standard maintenance, uh, replacement schedule that goes with, uh, the use of vehicles that have high mileage and and heavy use on them. We have five in this year's coming budget, um, so we're asking for those vehicles. This cost not only includes the vehicle, but the change-out costs associated with moving all the equipment out of one of the other vehicles into the new vehicle. Third item is, uh, replacement of police canines. Our two dogs, Ty and Stryker, are getting up in years and while they are still functional and still able to do the job, we don't know how much longer they'll be able to. And the way those dogs train and the way they work on any given day, they could suffer a spinal injury, uh, that could prove to be the end of their career. Uh, so we are putting money in the budget to try and be prepared if that day comes. And this is a worst-case scenario in terms of the number you're looking at here. This would include two dogs, the cost of training those animals and two new handlers because our current handlers are experienced that they could take a new dog and begin to work with that dog and and build a team quickly. But if either one of those individuals chooses not to continue as a canine handler and we have to get a new canine handler, they would have to go to training to learn what's involved in in effectively handling that animal. So those costs are associated with this line as well. So what you're seeing here is what we believe to be a worst-case scenario if we lost both dogs and both handlers in the coming year.
So Chief, are we doing anything proactively here or are we just kind of waiting to see what happens?
We will wait.
Okay.
We do not necess, we don't want to take a dog out of service until it becomes necessary. Uh, if if the dogs suddenly start to develop some physical issues or lose their drive, something like that, then we will take that action. But to just retire the dog because he's hit nine and a half, 10 years old, we don't want to do that. As long as they're still working, we want to keep them in service.
And what's the ramp-up time from getting a new dog and potentially a new handler, I guess, up to actually being up to speed and and working?
If we had to select the handler, you've got some time involved in that. We would work, uh, there's several agencies in the Kansas City area that obtain dogs on a regular basis. We would go out to our our peers out there and find out what kennels across the country are. Dog kennels have good days and bad days, are cyclical somewhat in the animals that they get and the effectiveness of the animals that they're training. Uh, so we would find out who's got the hot hand, so to speak, and who has the best animals right now. And then it's a matter of finding the right animal, making sure that it's trained up, dual-purpose, and I would say.
Three to six months?
Hmm, yeah.
Five, more, six to nine?
No more, no.
Watching their faces and.
I think top end would be six months, I would say.
Top end would be, around six months?
Top end would be six, more than likely, uh, three to four. And sometimes it's a matter of getting the dog too, making sure that you get the right dog.
This has nothing to do with cost, but what happens to Ty and Stryker when they're retired?
Uh, my guess is.
Curious as a dog person.
What has happened in other, with other dogs that we've retired is, uh, we allow the handler to keep them. Um, the city, because it is, the dogs are city property. Um, the council has agreed to declare that as surplus property and leave it in the hands of the handler.
Now, Chief, on your vehicles, go back a minute, are there going to be Ford, uh, explorers again?
Yes, sir.
Has the exhaust problem, uh, uh, people say the problem, I don't know if it is or not, for the exhaust?
And the the answer is yes, the exhaust problem's been addressed. Um, I think what they determined the exhaust problem was is there was a plug that some installers were pulling out of the floor pan to run wiring through, which allowed the exhaust to work its way up through that place that there should not have been a hole. So that was part of the problem there.
Good.
And are these going to be hybrids?
We budgeted for hybrids, but we still want to, uh, we've got one hybrid coming, we're going to see how it works, but I don't want to be getting into a hybrid.
We've got, yeah, we're all from the show-me state, you're going to have to show us that the hybrid works. Uh, but we did budget accordingly so that if the hybrid does seem to be a good fit for police service, the money's here to buy those.
Sound like a plan.
And then the last item is tactical body armor. Uh, this is kind of like the bunker gear for the fire department. Uh, body armor has to be replaced. Uh, the warranty only extends five years on that. Uh, this is the body armor that we've worn by our SWAT officers. This is not the body armor that we're wearing right now. This is a much heavier, more robust, uh, armor that has more coverage on it as well as all the molly attachments for this, the different pouches and everything that they wear.
That's $2,000 apiece on average.
Yes.
Just over $2,000.
More like $3,000 apiece.
Well, that'd be 39,000 if it was.
That concludes the items from the police department. If you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Next item, just listed under Public Works Administration, uh, one, we put designing, engineering contingency, just if there's, there are projects that sometimes come up from time to time that aren't associated with another project that, uh, it's just nice to have some dollars there available if if something comes up that we need to take a look at getting some engineering help on. And you want to talk about the halftime pickup truck?
Yes, um, we're requesting a halftime four-wheel-drive pickup drive, uh, $40,000 maximum. Um, the current, uh, four-wheel drive is 2004, um, and it's got a lot of electrical problems and, uh, it's really at the end of its useful life, so I'd like to buy a new one.
And the water treatment plant rehabilitation, I think you're pretty familiar with that project, uh, been going on for a while. We, what with the amount that we have here is the remainder of the entire amount that we said we would budget for this, $14 million. Uh, we have not yet gone out to bid, but we should be ready to do that soon. Uh, right now, MDNR, I believe, is still reviewing the, uh, design by our engineer, Berns and McDonnell, but hopefully with that, it'll be going out to bid and construction beginning, what, first half of next calendar year? Would that be the expectation?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, we're talking about actually January, February.
So, uh, any questions about that? All right, uh, the next item listed under water pollution control is capital projects transfer. I think you're pretty familiar with this one as well. The problems that we've had with the water pollution control budget and the reasons why. Uh, so we we had, we talked not too long ago about using the gaming fund to fund the regularly scheduled, uh, capital projects that that we have in this fund, which total $485,000. And then also transferring an amount to cover the PID repairs, which have just been completed or will be tomorrow. Uh, so that's good, but they they were very expensive. We will be having an amount before you shortly to talk about that. So, uh, that's what that is. Any questions about that?
Pat, are we, I know we had another water main break down here on Swift. Are we, are we getting ahead of this thing or are we getting behind with the water main brakes?
Yeah, actually, that was a valve break. Um, we were changing out last summer or early summer, there was a project and we knew that we broke two eight-inch valves at 23rd and, um, and clay, and there was no hurry because they weren't leaking. So we finally got around to repairing those. And this is what happens when you have, uh, we found valves, a lot of them, what we're finding are date back to 55, 1955, they actually have dates on them. So what happened is to isolate the valve, um, it it broke. So the isolation valve broke, so we had to go Monday, repair it. Staff did a great job and then we went back to to our schedule on Tuesday and repaired the other two. But the bottom line, and we're starting as we talked about at last meeting, we're starting a valve exercising program and we're going to find a lot of old valves that need replaced, but it's got to start sometime and we're going to do it this year.
And as again, we'll do it in the most planned way we can, make sure that there's as little disruption as possible, but yes, it was frustrating for for that to happen on Monday to.
Yeah, when we have to close down businesses because they can't get water.
No.
That's not good.
It is not.
Eric, thanks for the updates on this, by the way, because if questions come in, that's helpful to to know. Um, is it possible to do these, like, I know it's not fun to work in the dark, but is it possible to do them overnight, like, between the hours?
Yes, as a matter of fact, you know, next year we have a program that we're going to do, one of the most important ones along Armor Road, that's also the largest, uh, it's a 14-inch pipe that feeds the reservoir, it's the most important one. We will do that, you know, after hours and, uh.
And on a weekend perhaps, it minimizes the impact on business if we do run into a longer river.
Yeah, don't disrupt Sunday brunch, though, that would make a lot of people mad.
Last item is just another item that we we have every and every year, just a contingency amount for Public Works. If if something comes up that's really an emergency, we ask the mayor if we can tap into that, and so that's what that amount is. And we're now to the point where it's the Pat Haver Show, uh, for the next three funds that are are under his jurisdiction, transportation, water and water pollution control. Some of these are ones that we have in every year, so we might not spend too much time on those, but Pat, I'll go ahead and let you touch on.
Yeah, one of those that are ongoing is the curb sidewalk and drainage improvements project, that's basically concrete repairs, lots of catch basins being rebuilt, sidewalks, and 280,000 is planned for this year, that should be sufficient.
Is that like if a tree, like tree roots are pushing a sidewalk up and we level it out and all that? Is that part of this program?
Yes, sir. Uh, the next one is North Gate Alley Repairs, that's supposed to be a three-year program that started last year. Uh, we're going to, you know, continue it at $50,000 this year. Um, the alleys, the concrete alleys, uh, were not built to drain and, uh, some poor engineering went back in the day when they were built. And what happens is, uh, stormwater settles and in the winter, snow melts and the salt stays in those puddles and just has deteriorated a lot of areas throughout the North Gate area. So each year, we, we're going to get it till it's right.
Yeah, go, one question on that. Well, how did that process work? So a developer developed it and then we accepted it like this? Is that, okay, and then we're responsible for everything? Is that, okay, and then we're responsible for everything?
Okay.
We talked about possibly engaging an engineer to take a look at everything over there before we start, you know, putting more pavement in or more.
Yeah, we're going to do that, just might have an idea.
Would there need to be more money in there for the, okay, for the engineer cost?
Not at all. We have the engineering funding. The next one, Streetscape Grant Program, that's ongoing. It's been going since 2007. It's actually a pretty popular program for certain businesses who want to apply for a 50-50 grant match to do improvements, beautification improvements along or straddling the right of ways. There's numerous cases you can drive in, well, only maybe if you're driving me, I could point out all the ones that have taken advantage of this. And they, they're responsible for perpetual maintenance.
Do we max this out every year?
No.
They don't?
Sometimes, sometimes we do, and sometimes we have, I don't know, $4,000 left.
So 3.2 businesses could use it.
It started at $40,000 in 2007, and we maxed that out. And then it, it kind of slowly dropped down because those, there's limited people, businesses that have right of ways that are, where they could grow things. Annual Tree Planting and Replacement Program, $30,000.
Do we budget that same amount every year, or has it gone up this year? I mean, I know we've had to replant a lot of new trees.
It's gone up because we've been taking out more trees.
Okay.
As you know, our goal is we remove a tree, we replace it.
We replant, right.
I know we put in for grants in the past, so we'd be putting grants again this year for tree, any grants for tree maintenance or tree replacement?
No.
Yeah, the Department of Conservation has a grant that it's pretty competitive. We have, we have applied for it in the past, and I think we did get funding one year for a program, but.
To do a tree inventory. $5,000 for a salt spreader on a ATV. $5,300 for traffic cones. We need 100 more traffic cones for Snake Saturday and all these projects that are going Asphalt recycler, we're excited about this one. I'll tell you real briefly what that is. You know, when you, generally, when you fill potholes, like we had a million of them this winter, you just fill them with a patch, and it's temporary. Even a hot patch, hot asphalt, it's just going to come out. This is something a lot of cities and MODOTs using. It heats up the asphalt all around it, and you do put a little ass, hot asphalt in it, but just a little, and it forms, and it's permanent. And we are really looking forward to this device.
That's cool.
All kinds of things we could do with that.
McConnell has one of them, though, don't they?
Probably, yeah.
Just a quick note, in your budget, the emergency water repairs shows as the last item in the transportation fund in your narrative. That was, we just failed to get it under the right heading. We'll make sure that's corrected in the next budget document, so, in the final version of the budget document, obviously, that's in the water fund, which, and I'll just, you know, I think you're familiar with that. I, one, one point that was made was gee, as these emergencies, maybe, I think we might just take out the word emergency in the final document. We'll call it water repairs because it won't just be for emergencies, some of it'll be planned ones, but it'll also cover emergencies. But typically, you know, until the valve replacement issue that we had, that we know we need to try to get in front of, that's, this is the amount that we reserved when we had some kind of a water main break, those kind of things that we needed to fix. But did you have any other?
Yeah, the reason it's way up this year, $300,000, is because of our valve replacement, our valve exercising program. Water pump station maintenance, again, we have water pump stations, one at Sunny Hills and one at, near the hospital on Vernon. It's just there in case we need maintenance. Water meter replacements is an ongoing project we've done since, I think, 2006. As meters get older, they slow down, and when they slow down, we lose revenue. So every nine years, we have a program where we would change out meters because it, in the long run, it pays off. And I want to note that the replacement of these meters for $25,000 is also in the WPC fund because we use the water meters to determine what to charge for sewer charges.
Can we put an old meter back where we put the new one in to connection to Kansas City?
That's a good one.
I'm sure they wouldn't appreciate that.
Water plant maintenance repairs, again, even though we're getting close to the major rehabilitation, we still need money in there to keep the plant up. It's old, and we need to keep it running until it's renovated. Water treatment plant maintenance shop roof repair, $6,000. It leaks, we're going to fix it for $6,000 or less. Well cleaning and maintenance, this is $50,000. This is, every year, we put in $50,000. We always clean one well and rehab it because of all the grit that gets in there, and sometimes we have to do two. You can't really plant them, but generally, we do one or two each year. And you can get two done for $50,000. It's just something that, once the, the volume of a well, we have all these meters on it, the volume starts slowing down, we know it's time to clean them. Water Pollution Control Fund, building, maintenance, and repair. This is for the WPC facility, and it's just there because we know that we're going to be spending money on some type of maintenance on a very old building each year. Emergency sewer repair, repairs, that includes storm and sanitary sewers. We've increased this quite a bit to 175, $175,000. That wouldn't have done us much good this year, but we have increased it, so we're, hopefully we'll get back to normal, and this may be over budgeted, so. Pump station repairs, we have $40,000. As you know, we are responsible for keeping those maintained, and $40,000 is generally enough to do so. Redevelopment of landfill water monitoring wells. In 1987, the city disbanded and capped our sewage treatment sludge landfill out there by the river near Harrah's. And since then, the D N R has been making us, we installed monitoring wells right after that, and we have to do tests on it and send them in to them. Last year, we were notified that our five-year permit was had a contingency on it to be approved, and that is to install, to renovate, I think, five, renovate five of the monitoring wells and install two new ones. So that was going to be done in 2019, but because of the high river, it's right on the river, we put this off and rebudgeted it for this year. Skated additions, those additions are, this year are planned for Atlantic Erie and Burnington pump stations. Last year, we had, I think, $15,000 spent on Rock Creek only, and it really helps. You can, it brings back, provides connection to the computers that monitor the stormwater levels at the pump site, and allows staff to start and stop pumps to avoid electrical spikes. And electrical spikes can be very expensive. Water meter replacements, we already talked about that program. Bedford pump station chain hoist, we have an existing 2.5-ton capacity manual chain hoist and with an upgraded motorized five-ton capacity hoist. This hoist is used to remove and reinstall sewage pumps from the basement of Bedford Lift Station. The existing hoist is manually operated with lifting capacity of 2.5 tons. The pump motor weighs over 2.5 tons, and pump companies have recommended we install a hoist with a minimum of four-ton capacity. Kind of, it's a big deal, and it's expensive, and it's dangerous when you lift a pump out of there with a hoist, and this would be a safety and an upgrade. Lab water filtration system, certain laboratory operations, we call, we require reagent grade water and BOD testing. The bottom line is we're asking for new equipment because ours is old and corrosive.
Question, Pat?
Yes.
What is reagent grade water?
It's very pure water, basically.
I mean, we can produce that in-house then? Or do we have to buy it?
No, it's this filtration system that will filtrate our water, so it's very pure water.
So we're upgrading a filtration system to give us regraded grade water?
Yeah, because ours is, it's too old to do it properly, and you need that when you're testing.
Thank you.
Stormwater main video investigation in the P I D area, the problems that we had this, this year with the high river, that put the hydrostatic pressure on the ground with, and the storm sewer pipes. Main reason we had sinkholes, there's two, two reasons. One, that pressure broke the joints of these 48-inch pipe, carcary pipes. It made the joints fall apart. When the joints fall apart, everything falls through there, and you have a sinkhole. And another reason we had a problem was some of them just sunk, and so they wouldn't drain properly. So we've been advised that it would be a really good idea by the Levy District Engineer, who is really familiar with these, to do a video investigation of all the pipes, stormwater pipes, in the, in the P I D, to be a little bit proactive and see what we got there.
Yes, sir. In your experience, do you think we're going to find much with, you know, the camera technology? It's hard to diagnose a pipe that hasn't broken yet, right? Like, you get down there and you see a pipe, you might possibly see roots in a joint, or you might see a little bit of degrading joints, but other than a sagging pipe, how is this really going to get us ahead of that?
Well, that's a good question, but if we do see some, they could be repaired.
Right.
Before they get worse, because they are going to fail if they're starting to separate.
Right.
And if they're sinking, we need to know about it too, because that's going to be a problem, and get worse.
And this is to video the entire P I D, all the stormwater?
Yes.
Is it our equipment, or are we going to subcontract this out?
Oh, we have to contract it out.
So we put an RFP out for somebody to do this?
Yes, sir. Bedford pump station headworks, sewer gases have eroded the concrete around the floor hatch, the floor hatch itself, the foundation, doors, the walls, all over, all around the Bedford pump station and the headworks. The headworks is a pit, a concrete pit with a hatch on it where the sewage flows through, goes down the pit, and then goes out. It's important and essential, and we just need to repair all the damage that's been done from the gases from the sanitary sewage. Oh, my, about done here. We want to replace the fencing around the WPC facility. We've done this for about every other year, there's a portion that we need to fix, but it's 500 rusted over, fencing with overgrowth in it, $17,500. It's important to keep that secure, so.
Question?
Yes, sir.
If we so desire to put this new fencing in, are we going to do a more proactive job in keeping the overgrowth out, or we just want to let it continue to overgrow?
Yes, they, good, you're in a point. We now do roundup around the perimeter to keep that from growing.
Because it looks like we have not done it for a long time.
It's, it's not just the overgrowth, but, yeah, that's, that's true, that's hard to keep up with, but they're committed to it. And last, but not least, landscape screening. The 19 Avenue pump station is a sewer pump, sanitary sewer pump station that's located in the One North Development, and the, they've been looking for ways, building big walls around it that the city would pay for to buffer it, and what we're looking at now is just putting vegetation around it, perhaps trees. We're asking for $10,000 to do that.
Is this something the developer would like us to do, or?
He didn't ask us to, but this all sort of came about when we started looking. You may recall, there'd been an amount in there for odor control, and so we were looking at whether there was an issue and whether perhaps we ought to look at replacing the entire pump station, which we eventually concluded we did not need to do. But in the course of doing that, we took a look at it, and we said, gosh, this would really be one that we think would benefit from being proper, you know, naturally screened. So that's, it's our, it's our proposal, not his, but I think he'd welcome it, especially as the area becomes more built up and there are things around it.
Will we maintain it, then?
Yes.
Well, it sticks out like a sore thumb. It shouldn't be camouflaged, with people living.
Yeah, it's a security piece, too.
It used to be out in the middle of nowhere, but it's not anymore.
Yeah, right.
That concludes our review of the individual projects. So now I ask you if you have any other questions, or if you have anything that you would like to change in the budget, either that you heard about tonight or that you may have heard about last week.
I forgot to mention something last week, and I don't know if this is a budgeted item or not. If it, if it is, hopefully, it'll be a small one, but we're having problems with the water fountains at the dog park. Not working, they get them working, they seem to not be consistently working, they're rusting around the edges. They look much older than.
At the dog park?
Yeah. They look much older than what you would think they look like, so, or the age that they are. I haven't mentioned that to Kelly or Roberta or anybody yet, but I thought maybe I could mention it tonight, if we could look at some options there. I mean, they can repair it, but it's, feels to me like it's going to need to be replaced at some point.
I will speak to them, and they have a nice, healthy fund balance, so they might be able to.
Okay, good. And I noticed they didn't have much in their five-year plan, so maybe they can look to add some water fountains.
All right, but we'll, we'll ask them about that and see what we, we'll evaluate what we, what's going on and what we might be able to do.
Okay, thank you.
We never do anything for the cats. My cats are no different.
A quick question on the parking spaces on Armor Road, the parallel, is there any time limit on those right now?
Been monitoring Facebook?
Yeah, I have. I just, on the parallel parking along Armor Road?
Kim and I were parked out there all day long today.
So no parking.
Oh, I was going to say, staff should park out there.
They did.
You did, okay, good.
Okay, I had one back from the previous meeting, convention and tourism, the Destination Attractions Initiative, page 142. I just feel like that's a lot of money, and you're not getting much bang for it on that. It, if you go look at their social media history, they have one, one post in July, two in August, one in September. Their last Twitter post was 2015. The other two are Facebook and Instagram. I just don't know if, and if you search for what to do in North Kansas City, that doesn't show up. I didn't find it on page one, page two. I ran, I mean, I didn't have enough time to go 20 pages in. I know it takes some time to build some of that up, that search engine.
I knew I should have had Rich Grove's come tonight.
I mean, it just, sorry, I mean, we can have that for another meeting, too. It's, it's just, like, what matrix are we using? I mean, are we asking for a matrix back on that to see if anyone's visiting any of the stuff, if it's being utilized?
Kim, not to put you on the spot, but I do know that Kim has looked at this, has talked to the business council about it. Any insights you could share?
Yes, so one of the things that I've been chatting about is a marketing plan that has built-in goals, passwords, and metrics. They, last time I chatted with Rich, he was. trying to get with Northland Caps to have them, have a team of kids put together an actual marketing plan that would outline what their goals and objectives were. I'm unsure if they were awarded a Northland Caps student, but that is one of the things that I have been asking for as well, is what is their, what is their marketing plan?
So, I mean, we gave them that, or allocated $20,000 last year, and they didn't even have a marketing plan for what they were doing with it?
No, primarily what that was, was to build the website, and some of that money is rolling back to the city and being asked to be reallocated into this coming year.
And to follow up on that, I chatted with John Miller a little bit about, you know, the process, and I talked with Rich. Twenty thousand to build the website. They kind of, they said they went with somebody they knew that they felt comfortable with. The trouble I had, and this is something that I've discussed with Rich as well, there's a website out there that already exists that does exactly what their website does. Verbatim the same. Even the RSS feed for the calendar is the same. So we spent $20,000 on a website that was already built.
It wasn't the full $20,000.
Okay.
I want to say it was 50, and I'm pulling from memory here, so please don't hold me accountable for numbers that I'm kind of pulling out of my hat here.
Right.
I want to say it was around $5,000 for that website.
For the website?
Correct.
Okay, and the other 15 was for...
They've actually rolled back about...
$12,000 rolled over.
$12,000 back to the city, and then had asked if that be rolled forward to this next school year.
So what is the intent of the 12, what are they going to do with the $12,000?
So a lot of that is to beef up their social media. That is, one of the things that they had asked for was to beef up the social media component, as well as implement a printed map version to have inside of all of the restaurants within North Kansas City. So I think that Rich maybe gave you guys, and I'm, I'm trying not to speak too much on his behalf...
Happy to ask them to come and have that conversation directly with you.
Yeah, because they couldn't get any lower on social media numbers. I mean, the next number's zero. So, yeah.
Yeah, as Eric said, we can maybe ask to see if they could...
Yeah, they'd probably better have them.
Perhaps, perhaps Mr. Groves and perhaps their consultant might come, and because, I mean, to be honest with you, this is a request. We put it in. We're not, you know, we're not directly involved, so we're not that up on what their thinking is.
All right. I mean, if we're spending convention tourism dollars, just want to make sure they're actually benefiting. We want it to benefit.
You're absolutely right. I mean, we should be making sure that we're getting our bang for the buck.
Thank you.
If something's not in the budget, for example, the shade structure on the Howell Playground, does that mean it's off the table for this year?
No. If you would like to allocate money out of the gaming fund budget for shade structure, then we could do that, and then we can talk to Parks and Rec about, about getting it in. I, I'm sure they would welcome having the money. I don't know if I dictate a particular structure to them, but that could be a conversation. But if you want, I think we, based upon the shade structures that we have in DAG, I think they're around $6,500 apiece.
Sure.
And I don't know exactly what you had in mind to replace the shade that was lost by the trees.
There's been a lot of discussion.
But, you know, if you want to, if you want to put an amount in, and then we can talk to them about working with them to, to get something accomplished.
Sure. And I don't have that number tonight, but I know the, the type of structure that's been discussed, at least in the neighborhood, and, you know, it's one of the sail-looking types. You get an open m一座, and it's got a big sail that would set to block the evening sun coming into the playground.
Do you think $20,000 would do it?
Probably. I, I'm not a, any bit of a subject expert on shades.
I'm not either. I just sort of sometimes estimate these things, and, you know, I mean, but I mean...
Twenty, twenty should get it there, I think, or at least for this year, get it started.
Well, if that's, if that's, you know, is that something that, and this is a case where even though it wouldn't be binding, I might ask for a show of hands or something just to see before, because if you all indicate that you want us to put that in, we'll put that in on your budget that you have on the 17th. Good?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
All right. So an additional $20,000 for shade structures in Mackin Park.
Specifically, playground.
Pat, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment. It's going to take structural engineering and installation. You know, with, I think 20 might be low, maybe 25.
Oh, say 25.
Okay. We want to make sure we have enough engineering, and it's not going to fall down.
And is there a reason the parks can't pay for this?
Well, only that you can ask them to, but it's just, I, I don't think you can dictate to them how to spend the Parks and Recreation Fund budget. If you want to use gaming funds, that's, as we've talked about, sort of money under your control. The Parks and Recreation Fund is under the control of the Parks Board.
It'll actually get done this way, if we have the money, if we're dictating it. We're waiting for them.
I think that's, that's an accurate statement. I think, yes.
I'm just trying to make it simple.
I have one, and maybe this falls under some of the Streetscape work. In talking to some of the business owners along Armour, we have the parking lot behind off Erie that's directly behind the movie theater, but sometimes people don't always want to park there, because that, that's a well-lit lot, but that short stretch of Erie just doesn't seem to get a lot of light down onto the sidewalk in the road area, which creates a discomfort with some people, and then people don't want to walk in there.
Would that be a discussion for the 24th, sir? Could be. So the consultant will be here?
Yeah.
So maybe that we could have that, that discussion then.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, you know, you want to try to connect those parking lots to the destinations, so people...
Oh, yeah.
Good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be out of line if somebody from the city would notify somebody about these shade structures that they're talking about, and see if they can get some kind of a better deal than what it seems like the park department's getting?
Are you talking about the one that's proposed and not built yet?
Fifty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, sure. I mean, I think we're talking about different things, I think.
He's talking about the one on the stage.
The one, the one for the stage, which I think has got a special design. These would probably be something a little bit more rudimentary, I'm guessing.
Very rudimentary, but that, that one, I do understand what you're saying. It seems high, like the number.
He's just changed the top.
But yeah, that was the difference.
But, so in other words, you'd like to talk to them about doing something that's less expensive than the $60,000?
Well, I'm not sure it's less expensive. I mean, at least, I, I know they would do it. I mean, it, I'm, I'm not saying, I just, I, I offered to give these people, the park people, the name of these people to contact, and as far as I know, they never did. And I think it's a wrong, I mean, they, they should contact these people because they've been doing this for 100 years.
So if you talk to me tomorrow, I'll be happy to, again, communicate that, and Parks and Recreation Director's on leave right now, so there's not anybody much to talk about. When she gets back, I'd be happy to talk to her and learn more about who it is that she's been talking to.
In other words, I couldn't go over there and talk to them if we're paying for it?
Of course you can, sir.
Okay.
That's what I want to talk about.